So I'm gonna go ahead and start by welcoming everybody. I think the first order of business is gonna be that we call our respective councils to order. Is that correct, Madam President?
Right.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just do a roll call vote on the Santa Ana City Council, see if we have a quorum, then I'll invite our visiting Mayor Steve Jones from Garden Grove to do the same. So if you could please call the roll, or would you like me to do so?
I can take the roll.
All right.
Should we do the pledge first, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, let's start with that.
I'll put you guys in the pledge.
All right, you got it.
We can please picture a hand right under your heart and ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we look at what we had here, Mayor Protem, we had it right after call to order.
But it should be the pledge.
I know, but that's what we had. Go ahead.
Councilmember Tina Harrell.
Present.
Councilmember Sarmiento.
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Polito.
Here.
Councilmember Solario.
Here.
Councilmember Viegas.
Here.
We have Councilmember Benavides absent this evening, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Our visiting mayor, please.
Thank you. I'd like to call our meeting to order on behalf of Garden Grove and see if we can do a roll call for Garden Grove Council.
Mayor Stephen Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Beard.
Here.
Councilmember John O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Tu Ha Wen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Fatbouy is absent. Councilmember Stephanie Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I believe, is oral communications. Do we have, have we received any cards from anyone in the public wishing to address the body before we get started?
I have not received any speaker request forms, but if you'd like to address the council, there are some green forms on the side, and you can complete those after and give them to me, but if you can come to the podium.
Go ahead. This is Peter Katz. Peter Katz from Santa Ana. Go ahead, Peter.
Good evening. I'm Peter Katz. I'm president of the Comley Board for the city of Santa Ana. But I had a business in Garden Grove for many years, and I know both councils here for many years, and a lot of friends on both councils here. And I proposed this idea to Garden Grove and to Santa Ana over the years. You know, when we tried to put a soccer stadium at Willowick, there was huge community backlash because of the parking in that area and the crowds that would come into the neighborhoods. And I think any major development there would cause that kind of backlash again. So what I proposed was to try to make ends meet here, is to upgrade that golf course to PGA status and put a five-star hotel there, bring golfers out in the wintertime. And the only things going through the neighborhoods would be limousines, and it would qualify for open space for both cities, and it could be used for community park space in the summertime. But if you put sports leagues over there, you're gonna bring a lot of cars into the neighborhoods. These are people coming from other cities, and these nonprofit sports leagues are gonna make a profit off of this park space, and I don't, I think it would destroy that neighborhood. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Yes, we have one more speaker.
Good evening, everybody. Just real quickly, I just wanna come from the perspective of being a resident. I come from the Santa Anita neighborhood. My family moved in that neighborhood in the 40s, so we have a rich history of that community. And I also have a unique background in that. I worked for the city of Garden Grove in the planning department for a few years. I helped develop the design guidelines. I also worked on that whole right-of-way corridor years ago. And I work for currently KTGY Architects, which is the architect record for the row which is under construction on Westminster and Harbor Boulevard. I'm giving you my resume because my perspective, as far as growing up in the community, looking at that beautiful, you know, golf course, which was an oasis, but it was chain-linked fence that was a barrier to us, as to the community. So there's never been a real interaction with the community, and there's never really served the community in any capacity. I've worked with youth and college students and various programs in the neighborhood for over 25 years. Matter of fact, I also worked in Garden Grove. I was the first kid works director, which David Benavides became after I was. So anyway, I've done so many outreaches there for years and years and years, and had never heard of or had any support, anything coming from Willowick or Garden Grove for that community. So I'm in favor for developing something that would serve the community, that would benefit the community in a positive way, and I know what beautiful things can be developed. I mean, I've been to Irvine down by the Great Park. There are many parks better than any park that I've known in my neighborhood. I mean, they have outriggers, they have treehouses that are bigger than this table here. They have obstacle courses, they have rope courses, and they have beautiful things that are serving the local community. So whether it's retail, commercial, or whatever the direction the city goes, I'm hoping that it would be something that would benefit the community. So that's my perspective, because I've heard many people that are golfers and so forth, that they've enjoyed the community, but my experience, growing up over the years, is just looking through the chain link fence, at the beautiful area that I'm not allowed to go into. And I would believe that 99 percent, 'cause I'm not a golfer, 99 percent of the residents in that community don't golf, including the men. So it's like having a fruit tree in your backyard, but never ever been able to participate in it. I'm gonna wrap it up right now. And just outsiders coming in and eating of that fruit tree. So I hope to see something developed there that would serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now gonna turn it over to our visiting mayor. He's gonna say a few words. Also, I'd suggest if you wanna speak, just raise your hand and roll call on our respective councils and our great friend Steve Jones from the great city of Garden Grove. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. For starters, just thank you, Santa Ana, for hosting this. And this is, this is very, very unique. So I'm sure this has been done somewhere in the world at some point, but I doubt any of us have ever actually gotten the chance to participate in a joint city council meeting between two adjacent cities. So we are doing something truly special here. I hope that we're opening up the beginning of an ongoing and very active and very open dialogue between the two cities towards doing something productive, both with this site. And I hope that this dialogue also leads to a lot of other possibilities of the two cities working together in harmony. We have all the right reasons, too, with the streetcar coming in and other kind of things going on. So this is, this is very unique, and this is exciting. I, I think I'm guilty of kind of starting off this, this round of discussions about Willowick. I know we've all been involved over the years, and this topic has come up many times. It's even come to the surface a few times that I recall over the, over the years that I've served on the planning commission and then city council in Garden Grove. So it's, it's nothing new to any of us, but I think this time is very unique for a lot of reasons. We've got a very solid economic market underneath us right now. There's a lot of transactional activity, a lot of things moving, a lot of things getting built in both of our cities. So the economies are strong in our two cities. The streetcar project is actually coming in. It's not just talk. It's, things are actually moving forward. On the federal level, funding is being, being pushed down upon OCTA to expedite and move things forward. So everything is looking good on streetcar, and we presume the streetcar system, four-mile stretch going from the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center through downtown Santa Ana, directly along the edge of the Willowick Golf Course and terminating at Harbor and Westminster, is scheduled to open in 2020. That's just several years out. Furthermore, the existing improvements on this site, the golf course, are encumbered by a long-term ground lease, which expires in 2020, I believe, as well. So seeing as how it takes that amount of time to do anything with a piece of land, and especially a sizable piece of land, I think that the timing is impeccable that we come together and start talking about this. I hope that we will embrace this as a golden opportunity for an economic windfall for both cities together. And furthermore, to embrace it as an opportunity to show the world what two city councils and two staffs working together can accomplish if we all create a process that's, that's above board and beyond reproach, that we can go forward and do this in a very methodical manner, where everyone is involved and all the information is transparent and open. That's what I would hope for, and that we progress towards making a wise decision together as a team on the same side of the table with whatever group or groups that we end up entertaining agreements with going forward on the site. So I'm really excited about the opportunity. I hope that everyone will keep their eyes on that prize and say, we, the collective we, have a 100-acre site beautifully located in the middle of Orange County, soon to be connected by a streetcar system, possibly connected into the 22 freeway at some point in the future. And otherwise, I mean, if you pan back 30,000 feet and you look at this location and the infrastructure that could be developed to serve it, it's a, it's an amazing opportunity. So with that, I think, I think that the agenda calls for just welcoming remarks by both of the mayors, and then I think both of our staffs have a little background that they wanna give us just about the nuts and bolts and specifics about the site, and then thereafter, we could open it up for discussion amongst all of them.
If I may, let me give a little bit more of a formal welcome, and yes, after that, staffs will present, and then all council members, please, you know, be thinking of comments, 'cause I suggest, you know, we all have an opportunity to make some comments here. Just a word on, on our two cities. In many ways, I think the streetcars brought us together, because at OCTA, you know, Steve and I sit on, on two different committees at OCTA, and I believe as a consequence of us working together, we've really been able to push the project forward. And now it happens to be something that's gonna link the downtown and much of Santa Ana to over on the west end, connecting into Garden Grove. The last two stations I consider to be Garden Grove stations, 'cause Willowick really is Garden Grove property, and, and also, you know, Harbor and Westminster, the terminus is Garden Grove, along Harbor Boulevard, which is a very important corridor. And in the future, we have to be thinking that it's gonna develop potentially both north and south, and that that'll connect Santa Ana and Garden Grove yet in another, in another manner. So as we look at that project, Steve mentioned that it's, you know, pretty much a done deal. Welcome, Mayor Protem. How are you, sir? Pretty much a done deal. I believe we're gonna be letting out contracts in February to, for the construction bid, so a lot of folks are gonna be bidding on, you know, how to, you know, when they're gonna build the project. We've, we've already begun the procurement of, of the streetcar. So that, I think you just can't overstate how that's gonna connect everything and why the opportunity and the timing is so, so special. You know, Mayor Jones is right when he says we've attempted things before. We have. At one point, we had an exclusive right to negotiate with Chivas USA, looking at potentially doing something that we could approach city of Garden Grove. That ultimately didn't materialize, but I think this is a very special way to do this, by us all coming together, opening it up to, to, you know, thoughts, ideas, concepts, and then seeing together what we can come up with. So with that, why don't I, you know, just say that I believe this is a very precious property, and that you can't find another one no matter what, and that as we do things, we consider that we, we ought to do things that are unique if possible. There's a lot of things we can do that are not unique, but in this particular site, because of its location, because of its size, because of the infrastructure developing around it, it's a very, very special site. So with that, why don't I turn it over to our staffs, and you guys make the presentations, and then we'll start with comments by our fellow council members. Who's gonna go first?
Well, I will go first.
Okay.
Good evening, honorable mayors and members of the city council. This is also my first joint study session with two councils, so it's a wonderful experience to be a part of that with both city councils. My name is Lisa Kim. I am the Community and Economic Development Director for the city of Garden Grove, and it is my privilege to work alongside the Santa Ana team to bring forward this collaborative effort. I'm gonna click over. So we have a very brief PowerPoint presentation to provide some history and some current, current site conditions relating to Willowick for the benefit of the audience as well, to give a little bit of background. To lead off, the city of Garden Grove acquired the Willowick site in 1955. As Mayor Jones shared, it is approximately 100 acres of prime greenfield properties in Orange County. There is an existing lease in place that was entered into in April of 2001, and it is expected to expire in 2020 December. There is a provision within the current agreement that does provide for a potential for an option to be extended, but that is at the discretion of the city of Garden Grove for that consideration. I'm going to turn it over to Vince Fregoso to highlight some of the current conditions relating to land use and zoning for the Willowick site.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, Vince Fregoso, Acting Plan Manager for the city of Santa Ana. I'm gonna cover a few things here on this slide. I'm gonna cover the zoning and land use, the general plan and the update we're working on right now, as well as a little bit about the OC streetcar. Now, as most of you know, because the property is in the city of Santa Ana, our zoning and general plan do govern this property. As far as land use and zoning, well, land use is pretty obvious. It's a, it's a golf course, been there for quite a long time. Zoning is open space, and that zoning's been intact since that golf course was first established, and it pretty much allows open space types of uses, golf courses, parks, as well as government buildings. The general plan designation for the property is also open space, so the zoning and general plan are consistent. And this also allows uses such as golf courses, parkland, other open spaces. The zoning is what you can do on a property today, whereas the general plan is our long-range vision for the property. Speaking of general plans, we are currently well over a year into a general plan update process. We're taking a look at different land uses throughout the city, first comprehensive update in probably close to 30 years. We have an advisory group that we worked with to put together some of our policies, our goals, as well as some land use and visions there. And our advisory group identified that the Willowick course is a potential site for some alternative uses besides a golf course use. So what we're gonna be doing, based upon that information, plus our knowledge of the property, we're gonna be looking at different scenarios over the next several months to see what type of good uses we could provide for the, for the golf course, given that the OC streetcar's coming in, given that the property lease expires here shortly, given that we're working on a general plan update right now. It just seems to be an ideal time to take a look at the future use of the property. And then finally here, the OC streetcar. As was mentioned earlier there, this property is directly south of a streetcar line, and you can see there to the left of the Willowick course, it's between two transit stops. So depending on what type of use out there, you maybe even envision a potential major transit stop being located on this site as well. So just being located in that close proximity gives it an ideal opportunity. So combination of a general plan update plus the location, just, it's really a prime site to take a look at some future land uses for it. And with that, I believe we'll turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you, Vince. Councils, we have suggested a few discussion items for this evening. We believe community outreach is paramount as part of this process in the transition of the Willowick site. As Vince shared, with the comprehensive general plan update that's underway, it is timely that we will work in collaboration with that effort and convene and program a community outreach meeting associated with the comprehensive out, general plan update, and highlight additional feedback related to the Willowick redevelopment opportunity. We also would like to suggest it would be beneficial to retain a neutral third-party facilitator to assist us with the transition of the Willowick site, whether it be assisting us through the RFP process, the selection of the top recommended proposers, assist us with the analysis associated with the economics associated with the project. We believe that would be instrumental and beneficial to have a third-party facilitator assist us through this process. Lastly, we have an executed MOU between both cities, and we are looking for city council feedback, how you would like us to handle the next steps in terms of continuing with joint study sessions or additional ways of how you would like communication being received as progress is made on the Willowick project. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'll turn it back to the mayors at this time.
Why don't we start on the left and right? Go ahead, Steve.
Quick first side comment. We have a bunch of food over here. This is for everyone in the room. Don't be shy. Please get up, go. This is a relatively informal meeting, so please enjoy the food, enjoy the drinks. Don't let it go to waste.
Thank you. I'm partaking already. Shoot, I broke it. That's why you sat where you sat. It's a very good seat.
So please, that goes for everyone involved. Yeah, and just, if we'd like to...
Who wants to go first?
Go around the room, announce who you are, and just any initial thoughts, doesn't have to be in-depth, but any...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. We'll go around, we'll go around the way you...
Stephanie, go up there.
Press the button, so it goes green.
Okay. This is Stephanie Klaffenstein, District 5, Garden Grove. On this discussion item sheet here, the community outreach obviously sticks out to me, and I'm just curious about the first steps of what that will look like, if that will be something that will be joint between our city and Santa Ana, or if it'll just be held in Santa Ana, and when might that begin?
I do imagine that it will be a joint effort between the city of Garden Grove and city of Santa Ana staff. I believe in this particular case, as it's associated with the comprehensive general plan update, they already have scheduled several community outreach meetings, so we would follow that model. I think what we would like to do is certainly enhance and receive additional feedback in terms of further reuse of the site, and engage with the community to see what additional community benefits they would like to see as part of the proposal, that when we do develop the RFP, it can be incorporated with that. Vince, feel free to...
Councilmember Viegas, would you like to go next? We'll just go around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering if staff could speak a little bit about the area around the golf course? Speak a little bit to that.
As you can see there, part of that, mostly the area is surrounded by a Santa Anita neighborhood. You've got a combination of single-family houses to the south and to the west, to the north. You have, I believe Garden Grove is, is up to the north. There's some residential there as well. Then to the east, you have the River Trail, plus you have a middle school there. So this is an opportunity that we envision here for taking a look at providing some additional opportunities to upgrade in the area there, by doing some investment and helping put some of the monies back into the surrounding communities.
So I'm familiar with a little bit of the area, but some of the schools, we have one school in that immediate area?
Directly to the east is Spurgeon, an immediate school.
Spurgeon. And then in the Santa Anita neighborhood, most of those folks, they go to school in Garden Grove area. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was just wondering, you know, keep that in mind, if we were gonna use this, if we're gonna maybe put some land aside for a school or something. But, you know, I have a lot more questions, but I can wait, and I will pass, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a general statement. I think I totally agree, and I'm sure all of us in this room agree, that we have a unique opportunity here. The stars have kind of aligned at this moment in time with everything going on, but we all wanna do it right. I think we need to get it right on the first time, and I do see this as a master plan with this property. And I would envision, you know, entertaining proposals from developers to get different ideas, and I have a totally open mind at this point, but I do think you have to look at it for a master plan situation, 'cause it is a very unique property. And I certainly hope that we all work together, and like Mayor Jones said, on a very transparent level, let's keep our personalities out of it, our own personal things out of it, and let's do what's right for the residents of both Santa Ana and Garden Grove economically and then as a, as a building. This, this could, we could prove to the county and to the whole country what we could do together to make this such a unique development for both cities, that this, you know, for the next 50, 100 years, this could really be something. That's the way I look at it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solario?
Yes, just following in that, you know, this definitely is unique and can be something good and important. I mean, in central Orange County, we don't have, you know, 100 acres, you know, all in one area, really almost, you know, raw dirt, so it really is like an open canvas, you know, waiting for some, some good development opportunities. We have the streetcar that really, I mean, it's around the corner, so this process, hopefully we can, you know, continue to meet as a group, but I think we're really gonna need, need staff or subgroups to move the ball forward, so we can do a lot in these next couple of years. I like the idea of hiring some people on the facilitation side and consulting side, you know, in terms of who we might hire, whether it be for appraisers or master planning, developing, rather than picking somebody, maybe there are RFQs initially, just so we can get a sense of who's out there and have some flexibility in who we, who we jointly choose, and I do think we should jointly do that. I do think we should look at a range of options, so not just residential, or not just a theme park, or not just a soccer park. You know, I wanna look at enough options so that internally for our councils, we can have a variety of choices to look at, but externally as well, this is an important piece of properties. We wanna vet the opportunities well. Finally, you know, meetings like this are important, but there's 14 of us, and I think, you know, I'd like for us to get together jointly, you know, a few times every year, but maybe we have some ad hocks, you know, my council knows I like ad hocks, or maybe a permanent, you know, smaller subcommittee. This area is in Ward 5, and so I definitely wanna be a part of it. I mean, there's room for us all to be involved, but look forward to continue to be involved. And I appreciate Councilmember Viegas's comments about the surrounding area, area, including, you know, very significant neighborhood, the Santa Anita neighborhood, and I'm glad that they sent some representatives, and they have some fantastic leadership, so I do want them to be part of this process as well, in addition to our Garden Grove constituencies. Thank you.
Mayor Protem. Fatbouy, please.
Well, Mayor Polito, Mayor Jones, and Councilmember from both cities, it's, this is just a great pleasure to be here today. I think this is a very historical moment, and I would like to suggest that at some little time, we, perhaps we take a picture together.
A good picture, all right.
I think this is, and hopefully this is history in the making, right?
Big selfie.
Yeah, yes. Well, if Councilman Chris Fine would be here, 'cause his, his lab Garden Grove last year, but if, had he been here, we probably already have some picture on Facebook already.
Yes.
Well, first of all, I would like to apologize that I won't be able to be here. I probably will have to leave by 7:00 PM. I have a prior commitment for a meditation retreat that had been planned for, for months, and it would be a devastation if, if I miss that. So I would like to ask for your, you know, excuse to allow me to leave by 7 o'clock. Well, with regard to this opportunity, I think it is very, very important. Certainly, Santa Ana, Garden Grove, and, you know, all the cities surrounding, surrounding our two cities have evolved and have changed a great deal. We see the, you know, the, the other ethnic community, the Vietnamese and the Hispanic community have expanded quite substantially. And also with the tremendous interest in soccer field by the, the other community, especially the Caucasian community, demand for soccer field have been, you know, increased by many, many fold. And I'm sure many of you have been asked by our constituents and myself included, to try to help many, you know, soccer leagues to find a place to practice and place to compete. And that certainly is, is one of a huge potential for us to consider. However, I think this is a really, really good opportunity that we should let everything on the table, and let our residents, let our developers, let our city staff to come up with... with, with the dreams to see, you know, what would make the best possible use for, for this close to 100 acre of land. I think this is very important that we have an open mind and explore all possibility because it is very important. In addition to that, it is very important for the two city council to work together and see if we can guide this through a successful, transparent consideration of what, what we want to bring forward. Over the last many, many years, many city council before, before our time had tried to work this out, but we were not able to move it forward. And I sincerely hope that this time, we will be able to work together, put the interest of the resident of both cities in front of us and move this along. Feeling that, I think, would be, would be really sad because we've been trying for so many times and you have the commitment from myself that, that I will work together with, with all of you to move this forward. I am very happy that, that I, this will give me an opportunity to work with, with many of my friends from the Santa Ana side. Many of you I have been, have a pleasure to interact and work with in the past, but this will be an exciting project.
Thank you. Just a couple of different type comments, just questions and we'll keep rolling. Could you go back to the other slide where you had Willowwick and you had the PE right away? I'd like to request that from now on, we, we show a station, certainly for purposes of these meetings, on that Willowwick site. Maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see it there. And I know that OCTA is not right now designing it, but if you look at all our work, we have full environmental clearance, we have engineered work from, you know, from the PE right away itself. And then as we develop something, it'll be up to us collectively to define how big of a station is it, where exactly, you know, people ingress and egress, how long, you know, the walking, waiting area might be, you know, what expected transit level. So if we just amend that on a go-forward basis and please show that, I think it would be a good thing. The other thing, could you go back real quickly to the other slide that you had, the one that you were at before I asked you to move? If you look at the upper right corner, there's a large mobile home park there. It's in Garden Grove. I'm not requesting that Garden Grove do anything, but I think that as we approach and think out of the box, there might be some proposals that, you know, would contemplate potentially purchasing that, you know, from a developer maybe or something and, and that would, you know, greatly enhance the capacity of the entire project if that were possible. Third, infrastructure type request is that, look, the streetcar is going to be great, it's going to be able to move a lot of people, but a lot of folks are going to be wanting to move by car. And, and if we could open up, and I know there's another issue, but long-term, because it's a multi-year project, if we could open up portions of that PE right away to vehicle or traffic, and I know I'm really going to scare our friends at OCTA by even uttering these words, but, but Mayor Jones earlier talked about potentially off-ramps off the freeway. Well, if we could somehow begin to think about how we can use that as an asset, because that, that's going to be a limiting factor. We might come up with different developments and folks are going to say, well, how do you move enough people in and out? And we might be able to make...
Multimodal.
Multimodal. You know, consider for purposes of these discussions, making that multimodal so we're thinking out of the box. The, the final thought is just that, you know, I know several of you mentioned, let's be open. I think we definitely have to be open and I said also be open to potentially, you know, some large regional activity there. I know I've suggested a potentially a soccer stadium with soccer fields, et cetera, et cetera, but something that we can do there that we can't do somewhere else. Because there's a lot of things we can do somewhere else, but, but this is a really unique site. With that, thank you and I'll turn it over to Mayor, Mayor Jones.
I'll go ahead and let it keep going around and then I'll jump in after we finish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Jones and Mayor Polito. So I had some quick questions for our staff. I know we spoke about some discussion items, which is the community outreach, the consulting, the MOU and next steps. Currently, the City of Santa Ana is embarking in its general plan, so the current zoning and land use for that is for open space. So for us to start the community outreach, are we doing it on the premise of what the current zoning is or are we going to have discussions of what, what they like to see based on the conversations of our year out with our advisory committee, some of those opportunities that were already shared or some of the opportunities from this council? And I raise this question because it's important, it's an important one, because what the current zoning is now, we only, you could only, you know, talk about open space, right? So if people want to talk about other, as the mayor's saying, trying to dream in big and we want to be open, but there may be other discussions that it may not fit that current zoning. And so I just want us to understand that and so I would just ask that we can, and I don't know when the next steps are, when we go out to the community, to give them that context, because I think it's important. Because if you're just giving them currently what it's zoned for and not knowing that it possibly can change, you know, we may not get very far as, as we want to move along with the community. On the consulting end as well, the same thing, I think when we go out, to go out for an RFP or RFQ or whatever we're going to call it, you know, they obviously know developers what it's currently zoned for and so, you know, I don't, it's very premature because the city's still updating and so are we going to wait for, I guess this is a question for this, for both councils and our staff, are we going to wait until we finish our general plan or are we willing to make a zoning change before the general plan? Is, I think, a question that I would ask to you all right now, because if we're going to want to, you know, start hiring consultants with, based on the current zoning and there's different ideas, you know, I guess I don't want to spend, you know, people's money or time or energy, you know, understanding that maybe this city council doesn't move towards zoning it to what they've said. So I just want us to have an honest conversation, make sure that we're putting it all out there and what does it really look like, you know, before we go out into the community. So I'm not sure if staff could ask before I go into the next steps.
Sure, absolutely. Mayor Potem, we're looking at this as a clean sheet, basically, an opportunity to take a look at all different options for this Willowwick site as part of a general plan update. The general plan update is really a vehicle for us to take a look at some future uses out there, so we're going to be open to everything and anything out there for the site, yes, so.
So just, just wanting to make clear, as you're giving us this presentation, that we're able to put a slide, you know, so that we're engaging with the community, you know, again, you know, the community's not going to understand that, they're going to just look at the current use and thinking all we can do is something with open space. And so I just want us to make sure that the community is able to dream, just as, you know, the city council may wanting to dream or developers, whatever ideas they bring forward. The, the next thing that I would, you know, just ask as well, as that we're doing community engagement, look at different ways of how we communicate, not only, you know, certainly within Garden Grove and Santa Ana, we have, you know, a lot of folks that are monolingual, but more importantly, you know, beyond just the traditional media, we also have young communities in our cities and so we have to be willing to not only do traditional media, but social, social media as well. And I'm just a step further of doing crowdsourcing, where you're able to get people's ideas, put a website and do crowdsourcing and sharing and they could actually see that on a map and, you know, being able to, to highlight that and have documents of that. I think it's important, not everyone's going to be able to go to community meetings, I think we all know that, and so we want to give as many different opportunities as possible so that all folks can participate and engage. And then finally, I would just say as well, is that as we look at the community benefits, also explaining that to our residents and what does that really mean? Because I think specifically in the Santa Anita neighborhood, you know, specifically those that are going to be impacted, you know, they really have a say, you know, obviously Garden Grove owns that, you know, and it's in our city, but it's surrounding their neighborhood and, you know, they too should be at the table and be willing, you know, to, to highlight some of the issues that they've had and what they would like to see in, in that area and, you know, and I think some, I think we need to figure out, how do we explain what those community benefits can mean for them that will help with upward mobility for them in that surrounding neighborhood. And then just finally, here in Orange County, as we look, we look, we know that arts is very important, we know sports, we have two major league, you know, well, we have baseball and hockey and then as well, culture is very important. So understanding that in Orange County, those are things that are very, very powerful here, a lot of entertainment, you know, with Disneyland and Knott's Berry Farm, you know, I don't have kids, so I forget about all these things. You know, now the Great Wolf Lodge and that other park and, so, you know, here we are in the core of the, of Central Orange County and we have a tremendous opportunity to dream big, but I would just also take it, you know, when I say dream big, to look at what our preferred future is going to be, not what it is today, but what it's going to be 10 to 20 years from now. And I think we all know that 10 to 20 years from now, the world's going to be a lot differently because of technology. And so we want to make sure that this is a smart community, a smart village and making sure that we're able to integrate what our future really is going to look like for the future of, of these future generations that are growing up here in Garden Grove and here in Santa Ana. So those are my initial comments. Thank you.
First, it's, it's great to be here and it's kind of refreshing to hear that the council members from our neighboring city made comments similar to our own. We made our own council meetings. Heard a lot of positive things, this isn't just a project, it's going to be an awesome project if we do it right. That's our intent here and the process seems to be starting pretty good right now. We follow through with this, I think we're going to have a lot of mutual, we're going to be in agreement a lot, in the process, but the means of getting to where we want to be. We, it's a unique situation, I hear a lot of, it's an opportunity, it's a unique situation, it definitely is. Our property and your land, we want to be good, good neighbors. I think we've always been good neighbors, but in the sense that we own the land, we also have a fiduciary obligation to our citizens. It's been a revenue stream for our city, so at a minimum, that's, it should continue to be that. But it should also be something, we say, exciting and unique.
And projected out.
So I like this idea of being unique, I really do. Prudent, practical, unique, exciting, awesome, so. And bringing this group, these two groups together, I appreciate the efforts of our mayor and our neighboring mayor and all our colleagues and our council people who seem to be our, our new best friends, I hope. And, and going forward, it's going to be, sorry for the cliche, a win-win proposition or win-win project. I think we're all committed to doing that, so far I've heard that. I think I'm going to hear the same thing going around the table going forward. So again, it's a pleasure to be here, it's, it's great to be a part of a historical situation. I think it'd be more historical when we make a successful project out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to start by welcoming our friends from Garden Grove and I can say that sincerely for many of you who we've known for a long time. I know Mayor Jones and I started, I think, together as appointees to both our respective councils years ago, so I think we've all had this discussion one way or another with many of you and amongst our council members here. So we're truly blessed because we represent two communities that are very multicultural and are sitting on an opportunity that, you know, is very, very unique, as was said before. And I have to applaud Garden Grove for its vision along Harbor Boulevard. So what you all have done to continue what started in the resort area in Anaheim and move it south, I think puts the burden and an onus on us to continue doing the same. So first of all, you, you know, you all are, you know, should be congratulated for that good work. You know, I go back to times when I think a theme park was even proposed there, the Hard Rock Cafe was once tossed around even before Chivas USA Stadium, right? And, and it was, yeah, I think it was going to be modeled after Myrtle Beach or something in South Carolina and then the recession hit, right? So none of us could really do much and I think the funding went away for that. But there's been several ideas and we're at the conceptual level, so it's, it's good to be at this place because we can think large and outside the box and think about anything under the sun. You know, one thing that I think I would caution our council members here in Santa Ana to be aware of is that we factor this space in, in our open space calculation. So we have to make sure that there is a benefit and I think it was mentioned, a community benefit, because if we're going to offset that and lose that, that 100 acres as it's, as it's factored and formulated for open space, we have to bring a good product to the, to the city residents here. And I'm glad residents, you know, from Santa Anita are here, were here and are here today because I know when we are proposing a stadium, you know, they were very concerned about the impact that they were going to have, so it's important that they be here and that we outreach to them. This is a great opportunity for a public-private partnership, so I think that, you know, what we do in the legal world, and I'm an attorney and I think a couple of you are here on the council as well, but sometimes when we're trying to find a neutral, objective third party to help us along, many times experts, you know, when both parties are litigating a matter, they'll select one each and then those, those selectees will select a third, right? Just to make it more objective, more neutral and unbiased. So something for us to think about, but, you know, I, I think all our problems will be solved when Amazon answers our, answers our requests and they'll just come along, right? So this all, this all may be moot, so. But, but yeah, I just, you know, want to make sure we, we do this in a really healthy way where the public will be, you know, will hopefully see this as, as something that we're doing that's positive for both residents and, you know, both our cities and so, you know, let's just keep that path and let's make sure our city staffs keep us on track, we don't go beyond the scope of our MOU, we don't do anything that hasn't been done without the consultation of both councils as well.
Councilmember Lynn?
Hi, my name is Tony Hagan, I'm a council member for District 3. It's my pleasure to be here. This is a historical event where actually two cities sitting down together and working on the same, working on the project. I think Willowwick is a hidden gem. It's just imagined, it's a stone and you make it become a diamond. So it's a, I believe in teamwork effort, I believe in all great minds put together, we can come out of great, the greatest project ever for Orange County. So, and in terms of the projects, just like my colleagues say, we are here together, we put, you know, all my set together and we open mind. And whatever work benefit for both City Garden Grove constituents and Santa Ana constituents, for the community's voice, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Yenayal?
Thank you. First and foremost, welcome and I want to also congratulate the City of Garden Grove because they have three women on their city council. That's pretty impressive, that's pretty impressive to see. We used to have two, so we have, we have to work on that, but congratulations on that. Before I go on to some of the comments here, can we go back to that, the, the streetcar where the slide was showing?
At one time you had three.
One of the things that I want our staff, as we move forward with Garden Grove and start working on this, it's about, it's about what really is happening on this line. Miguel, I really need...
Sorry, sorry. So go ahead.
What you see here is you see Orange County High School, the Arts. So you would think that there are no other schools or educational institutions along that line.
But there are.
And the fact is that you have Santa Ana High School right up in here, which is the flagship of our city. You have Carver, you have Spurgeon. So what I would recommend is that whenever we use these maps again, we include those schools that are there, because it's important for our residents to also be a part of this map as well. So I'm going to go sit down real quick.
Well, you still have the floor, Sal.
I still have the floor, Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
Okay, so one of the, something that I want to make sure that we do is that we set up our goals, short-term goals and long-term goals. Otherwise, we're going to have meetings and we're just going to talk. One of the things that I would like for us to talk about is what are we going to, what are we going to do with that land? Are we purchasing it from Garden Grove? Is Garden Grove going to stay with it and are we going to then decide on tax revenue? Is that how we're going to operate? Is that how we're going to operate? Because those are the real important key issues before we move forward. And I think, and I don't have, I don't have a horse in this race. All I care about is that we do something together where it's a win-win for the city of Garden Grove and a win-win for the city of Santa Ana. But those are things that we have to discuss right away. Uh, we should discuss who's gonna have the authority when it comes to development, where, who's gonna, who's gonna get to vote on that, or how much influence is Garden Grove going to have and so forth. Um, and like I said, it's just about setting time and short-term goals and long-term goals so that we can create a plan that works. I've always taken it as a, I remember when, when we were, Michelle Mar- Mar- Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Martinez and, and uh council member Sarmiento and, and council member Benavides, who's not here today, myself, when we were elected, we became an all Latino city council. And the, the um, we took that as a very serious uh thing, because we knew that the microscope was going to be on us, the lens was going to be on us. So everything had to be done by the book and we've worked very hard to show that you can have an all minority city council that does great things for the city. And I'm very proud of where Santa Ana is today. So here we have an opportunity to have a community that has a strong Vietnamese population, white population, different, different ethnicities coming to the table, diversity as far as uh gender as well, to be able to come together and build something that's awesome, that we can look back at as a legacy that we created. So if we can go ahead and start talking about those issues sooner rather than later, so then that we can, we can have a strong game plan. I want to thank uh Mayor uh Jones, because when we met, one of the things that, that really made me smile is he says, Sal, and I, I, I like what Councilmember O'Neill said, if we can take our personally, personalities out and just strictly focus, not, not on special interests, but focus on what's best for our communities, this is going to be a great project. And I'll keep saying that as we continue to meet, because I think we need to continue to move in that direction. So I'm very proud to be here, I'm excited, and uh I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
You know, Sal, you're in a win-win situation because you have a win to your right and a win to your left. Our next council member, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm glad to be here and, and meet with us jointly and hopefully put our great minds together and create something amazing, because I know that Councilmember um Vegas talked about the area surrounding that, but let's not forget that my district actually is on the cusp of this area. And what happens here is, if you can go back to the map that shows the Willowwick, please. So obviously, this is near and dear to my heart, because I grew up around that area. I wasn't actually in Buena Clinton neighborhood, but I grew up right across the street from it. So I witnessed a lot of the things that were happening there. And from the time that I moved to Garden Grove to the time we are in now, it's changed a lot. But there are still, there's still a lot of problems that need to be resolved in that area. And whatever we do with this site is gonna definitely affect that community. We have the Willowwick Royal Mobile Home that was mentioned. I have lots of friends that I grew up with, that I went to Santiago High School with, who live there, right? They're concerned, what's gonna happen there? Are we gonna have to move out? Are they gonna take us over? We have Buena Clinton directly north of that mobile home area. That has, you know, we have a gang injunction there, there's a lot of gang activity, although it is tapering off, it's still there. You know, we see that all the time. We have a community center that the city, you know, got funding for and is now built there, where a lot of families come and interact in that city, um, in that center. They have classes, after-school programs, and areas where kids can go and play and be safe, because we don't have very many parks in that area. In my district, which is District Six, closest to Santa Ana, we have one park, and it's a pocket park. It's very hidden, it's right next to Woodbury Elementary, right? Right, Woodbury? And, you know, I never knew about it. And I went to go see it a few last year and I realized why I never saw it or heard of it. And it's because my parents sure as heck would never let me play there. Very nice facility, the, a lot of the equipment and the restrooms are, are fairly underutilized. No one goes there. And you see a lot of homeless individuals and maybe some people doing things that they shouldn't be doing at that park. And so it's underutilized. And so this space is gonna be really important in what we do affecting that area. So obviously, I'm gonna be paying very close attention to what we do. Um, I would like, in the future, when we talk about the map and mentioning, bringing in and showing the schools, that we also highlight areas of my district down below, so that we can see, because it's gonna be, affect that area as well. And I feel that we neglect to show that there. We have Buena Clinton, we have Santiago High School, we have Clinton Elementary, um, and we have a, a significant other areas that we should focus on as well. Um, obviously, I want to dream big, you know, I'm, as only millennial on the councils on both. I obviously, you know, when I heard Amazon, I got really excited. I'm a serial shopper on Amazon, I like my things fast and delivered to my door, so I don't only have to fuss with other things, um, aside from most of us working full-time and council.
I love you kids.
And doing things, you know, I, I have to schedule time for my showers, I have to schedule time to walk my dog. I don't have a lot of time to go to stores and do this and that. So having things where I have apps, you know. The next, you know, I checked the time today, I actually took the day off, because we were gonna have a special meeting and I wanted to make sure that I'd be here on time. And I used my time to go speak at Bosa High School. And I realized it's now 2:46 and I actually haven't had a bite to eat, right? So as a millennial, for me, it's convenient and fast. And so the idea of Amazon obviously was like, ooh, that sounds interesting. But again, I'm not, I'm not sold or married to the idea. I'm really interested in to see um who we pick as a third-party consultant, and I would like for us to choose people who have um, who specialize in projects of this magnitude, right? This is a huge site, this, the sky is the limit. And so I want to make sure that we see everything that could possibly happen. I want to hear from people who are um experts in this, because I'm definitely not. And so I need someone for me, to tell me what they see, what their visions are for this area, and we can have a lot to pick from, right? I want to see the whole menu and taste a little bit of everything. Um, and I want to speak to something that Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Martinez said, and that's how we outreach the community. Um, obviously, Buena Clinton is there, so we can utilize that center and have meetings. But again, people in that area are working two to, two to three jobs, working graveyard shifts and are hardly home. That's why that center was built there, so that kids can have somewhere to go and be supervised by adults. Um, so we have to make it friendly for parents who are unavailable most of the time. So web-based outreach would be good. Um, places where they can look at maps and have interaction. You know, we're in the new age of technology, so let's utilize that and figure out how we can use that to our advantage. And um obviously mailing things with our water bills, um outreach, you know, council members, I'm happy to go knock on doors whenever I have free time on the weekend and make sure that I hear and meet with my residents to hear what they're anticipating is gonna happen there, because I know a lot of them are worried about um what this means for them. Is this gonna change the last landscape of that area? And does that mean that they're gonna have to move out and if they're gonna have to leave? So let's address those fears and make sure that we are listening to them, hearing their needs and concerns and addressing them as well.
Can we also get a little foot warmer, like a little heater? Because Councilmember Kim is just freezing right now.
She didn't schedule a foot warmer.
So.
Order that on Amazon, right?
Michelle, Michelle actually says she schedules her showers.
I do too.
All right, well, all the rest of us are backwards, but, but uh Councilmember Jones would like to say some comments.
And only five minutes, because conserve water.
Yeah, that too.
Actually, I'd like to make some comments.
Five minutes? All right, please.
So I had no idea what to expect leading into tonight. As you guys know, I, I went sort of ahead of all this and made the rounds and took the time to do one-on-one meetings with everyone in Senate, in Santa Ana, and then also with my own council to discuss this prior. I insisted that when we got to the point of doing an MOU, um, that we resist the temptation to make it an 80 or 100-page document, instead make it limited to one page, just so that we open up the scannorms and get to this point, as opposed to getting kind of hung up in the minutia. There's a million details that go forward on this. Um, you know, budgeting concerns, consultants, how to process, all these things. I'm thrilled to see that we've gotten to a successful uh MOU between the two cities. And it's very simple. It basically just states that the two cities are interested in jointly exploring development opportunities for this site. Um, I'm thrilled that we're here tonight. Um, I would echo some of the comments that have been made, that this is a historic opportunity for two cities to become the poster child of how two adjacent agencies could and ought to work together. Um, and I think we're capable of that, so I'm excited. Um, I think to get to the next step, we need to maybe drill down into some of the details on, get into the weeds a little bit on this and try and provide some clear direction to our staffs on what the next step should be. And let me maybe frame some of that and then we can kind of have some more discussion in terms of how, how we go forward. There was talk about a third-party facilitator. I think that would be an excellent idea. I think you've got this really unique situation where one city owns a piece of land that's located in another city. Cities invariably make poor developers. Sorry, but we, we, you know, uh, too many opinions and that sort of thing, and then um just a lack of market insight in terms of financing availability and uh everything that goes into taking a site and successfully developing it. So um I for one would like to see us promote this far and wide. I'd like to see um a lot of different opportunities come forward. I think we can learn from those, so I don't think we want to discourage anyone from speaking to us or anyone from submitting something or sharing ideas, because I think we can, we can benefit from that. Um, I don't think we want to upfront, I don't think we want to restrict in any way the possible use, future use of the site. I think we want to hear from the private market. That's my own two cents worth. I have absolutely zero preconceived notion about what this site wants to be when it grows up. Um, it could be simple, straightforward and something that could get done right away. It could be something elaborate and complex that involves 52 layers of IFDs and, you know, whatever it may entail, you know? Subsidies and blah, 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 and all that kind of stuff. All that's sort of open and on the table for discussion where I'm concerned, just as long as it comes back to some sort of rational basis that's supportable for the two cities to, to entertain. So I like the thought of bringing in some kind of a third-party consultant. I think, I don't know how we select that person. I mean, there's, there's ideas, like you said, Vince, Vincent. I don't know how we, we jointly decide on how a consultant is selected. I would suggest that that person or that group should be ethical, should be neutral to a fault, um, and uh obviously competent in terms of the understanding of legal technical issues with land use and, and sophisticated in that regard. But there's the sort of special sauce element of, it'd be great if we had somebody that was a good communicator, that had the ability to help these two cities create shared vision for how the benefits of this site could create a multiplier effect that, that span into both of our cities. Uh, I'm jealous of Santa Ana's downtown and what you guys have done. You guys have done an amazing job and I, I'm in and out of there a lot, checking stuff out. And I just like the vibe, I like that it's vibrant, there's a lot of stuff going on and you've, you've taken it a long way um in, in recent years to where it is now. We're trying to do that with our downtown. So you guys already have a, a jumpstart on your downtown is kicking. Um, we're still um selling ours and selling the vision and we've got some green shoots coming out of the ground, but we're not there yet. We've still got a sort of sleepy vacant downtown that's starting to progress with projects that are in the pipeline. Um, so you guys have a great downtown. You guys have a Harbor Corridor specific plan um that's starting to build out. There's a lot of opportunities when you get to where the streetcar terminates heading south uh down Harbor. We have the Grove Resort District, we have a history of hotel development as it, as it pertains to the Disney Resort area and that sort of thing. When you pan back 30,000 feet, there's a million ways this thing could get diced up, there's a million things that it could be. Um, we have to be obviously first and foremost very conscientious of the surrounding uses, um conscientious of our, our city's uh needs. But I think we should approach this with a total open mind and, and really hear from, from the public. There needs to be some narrowing mechanism. A hundred-acre site is not typical. And really, there's only a handful of, not a handful of, but I mean, there's, there's a finite number of developers who are capable of taking down and developing a hundred-acre site at Orange County valuations, right? So um there needs to be some sort of narrowing mechanism so that we, um, we might get hundreds or even thousands of prospective hits from wannabe developers, but unless they have a balance sheet and a bank statement and a track record of being able to complete something of this caliber, then I think we're probably wasting our time dealing with them. So one way or another, we need to have a narrowing mechanism, so we don't just get caught in the weeds for years on people who have a friend of a friend of a guy that's got a billion dollars or whatever, right? That could all be done through an RFP process, that could be done through an RFQ and then an RFP process. There's different ways we could get there, but I think to staff's point, we need some sort of outside consulting help, some group to field leads, communicate out to um, to the two cities. I don't know if it's uh just for discussion, I don't know if it's two different groups. Maybe we want just sort of a visionary-type person to help come, help us create shared vision and sort of define the aspects of what the RFP would look like. I mean, maybe we need some visionary consulting help first and then select a separate consultant for an RFP. Maybe that's all under one roof, I don't know. But this is just sort of the things I, I wanted to throw out for discussion. I'd welcome either of our staffs or city managers to maybe weigh in on any aspects of what could we provide you guys in terms of direction to be helpful in going forward from this point, to take, um, start taking multiple steps towards actually doing something um this time around. And maybe I'll leave it at that if you guys want to jump in at that point.
Go ahead.
Scott Stiles, Garden Grove City Manager.
Well, to the mayors and, and the members of both city councils, this has been, I think tremendously enlightening for all of us on the staff. You know, we're not entirely sure ourselves about what all the collective opinions of all of you are gonna be. And as I look back on taking notes about some of the comments that you have all made, the one thing I will tell you is through this whole process, and I know Raul will concur with me, I think our two staffs, since the beginning when we've been putting some of this information together about this site and talking about it and putting, I think they've really kind of enjoyed working together on this project a little bit. And uh I think they've had a good time doing it. And so I think of, as a staff, we're gonna be energized to try to carry out whatever directives that you wish for us to follow. And as, you know, I'm looking at uh some of the notes that you've made, clearly, I think there's, there's uh folks and groups out there that can really think about some of your wishes for, you know, understanding the community and paying attention to the arts and the community, the culture and the economics and the entertainment, uh thinking long-term down the road, 10 years down the road, how do we outreach to the community in ways that are a little different than maybe what we traditionally think of? So there's no doubt in my mind, if you give us the direction to uh spend some time as a staff and bringing back some recommendations to you, um, that we can collectively get to that, uh either with, um, you know, you've, I've heard talk of ad hoc committees and other people participating. But I think we really have some of the staff expertise that we need to really bring some good thoughts back to you as a collective body to, to kind of think of. So those would be some of my initial comments.
City Manager Godinez, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like uh my counterpart Scott Stiles, I mean, we, we didn't know what to expect here, but we were very excited about this prospect. I think that uh, just like Mayor Jones mentioned about the uh timing of things, with the lease expiring in 2020, the streetcar coming out in 2020, uh we have an opportunity because we're going through our general plan amendment. And I think that that presents a unique opportunity that is almost too perfect. Uh, I think the idea of having some uh help on the visionary or, or visioning process would be just, would dovetail so nicely with the general plan amendment, because like staff mentioned, uh, the general plan amendment is a look-forward document. And it's a, it's by its very nature supposed to be a visionary document. So I think we've got some real opportunities here today that'll help us prepare for the opportunity in 2020. And the working relationship between our two cities uh is just great. So I look forward to working with our collective staffs to bring something forward, just like City Manager Stiles suggested.
If I may, let me make a real quick comment, then Council Sarmiento, then Mayor Protem, and then we have to take a photo before he leaves and then we'll continue. Um, but, but just really quick, this is more for, for staff, but also for our fellow council members. I had the privilege of being on the board of the Orange County Great Park for about a decade. Some of what we're talking about has similarities to where, you know, the community input, how do you dream, what's a mechanism? We didn't do everything right, I'm not telling you we did, but, but we did a lot of things right. One of those, I believe, was we hired a tremendous landscape architect that did a master plan. Of course, we lost redevelopment, so all of a sudden the money was gone. And, and part of what we have to think of here is, is there gonna be any mechanism And part of what we have to think of here is, is there going to be any mechanism for funding a lot of what we're talking about? Also, I think we need to understand that no matter how fast we want to go, if we're really going to pull it off, it's going to take some time. This is more than a 12-month project, it's a multi-year project. I know we're already talking about 2020, but it's going to take some time. Also, I'd like to suggest that early on, staffs talk about money and how potential revenue is going to be dealt with. Because right now, all the money would potentially accrue towards Santa Ana in terms of taxes, yet the asset belongs to Garden Grove. So some mechanism, and I know Mayor Jones and I've talked about, you know, some type of a split, something that joins us at the hip so we really become one and not two separate cities trying to do something, but something where our interests really align. And so, look, I've got a bunch more comments, but let's go to Mayor Protem and Council Sarmiento as well.
Well, I think it's very important that I agree that we need some short-term goals, but I don't think we need to do that right at this moment. Because it's very important. Yeah, sorry. Even though I think it is important that we need to have short-term goals, and one of that would be determine what do we need, is it going to be Garden Grove goes sell off the land to some developer or to the city of Santa Ana, or is it going to be a long-term investment of the city of Garden Grove? I don't think we can decide that at this moment, not even in the near future. And I do agree that it's very important for us to communicate with our residents of both cities. And not only that, but perhaps to the other cities surrounding us. It is very true that whatever we do there, the bigger it is, the bigger the dream is, the bigger the impact will be to not only the residents surrounding it, but, you know, residents of Garden Grove, of Santa Ana, as well as Fountain Valley, Westminster and so on. So I think communication is a key and we need to work with the consultants so that, you know, we can listen to the resident and communicate to the resident how important it is of this historical event. And it may not only touch the 100-acre Wheel of Wake golf course. It opened a lot of opportunity along Harbor Boulevard, it opened up opportunity along Bonsa Avenue, touching all the way as far south to Westminster. Westminster had been very envious of Garden Grove because we are so close to Disneyland that allowed us to develop the hotel along the Harbor Corridor. The wish would be in the same place. The dream would become true if we could develop something. I don't know what that is, but that would open up the economic and make it vibrant for residents of the North Orange County. Now, District 1 of Orange is one of the poorest districts in Orange County. And I hope that we will take this opportunity to do something right that make it a good investment for all of the city, all of the residents of not only Santa Ana, but also Garden Grove, Westminster and the nearby city. And with that, I, you know, would, you know, look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Councilor Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sort of in Councilmember Bowie's position. I'm going to have to exit early as well, so I'm going to try to make some comments because I know what is most helpful to staff is for us to give some concrete guidance and as concrete as we can make it on an initial conceptual, big-picture view. Look, I think no matter how you look at this, 100 acres in this county is very unique, right? It's rare that you're going to have it in such a densely populated area like this, as close to a very busy corridor, very near to a resort area, very near to neighborhoods. So you have all these elements that are at stake, sort of, you know, forcing us to look at different opportunities. To the extent that you do, or we do agree on some third-party consultant, however way we achieve that, they look at a blend of different opportunities, right? We, as a council here in Santa Ana, have worked well with options that have been presented to us, whether here, whether it's purely residential, which would be a simple solution to this, right? Because we know how important, you know, more unit spaces for residents in both cities. Look at amenities that could go on that, hotels, entertainment, open space, you know, all these different things that could be blended into a 100-acre site. I don't think it has, I don't think there's a silver bullet here where we say it's going to be a resort, or it's going to be an entertainment destination, or it's going to be a purely residential. I see this as a very unique space that could straddle almost all four of those elements. And I think it's going to take a very talented, creative consultant to help us work through this, but again, to the extent that we can have options, right, that can be presented to us. And I think that's probably most helpful preceded by an RFQ that will have anybody that comes before us make sure that we know their financials are at stake. Where we've stumbled here in the city, and I'm sure Garden Grove has had its challenges, is we have people that have great ideas, they just can't finance them. And so we spend a lot of time looking at nice pictures and great renderings, and in the end, we ask, well, how are we going to make this pencil out? And it ends up just, you know, wasting a lot of time. So, you know, I want to finish by saying, you know, thank you, Mayor Jones, because I know you met with me and you've certainly done, you know, yeoman's work by meeting not only with your individual council members, but you've actually reached out to us here on this side. And that really shows great leadership. So I know we're going to be in good hands making sure that we're working with you and you work with us, and I certainly appreciate the leadership you've demonstrated.
Thank you. And talking about leadership, we've got to, we're going to lose several people, so I'm going to call on Mayor Jones right now and then Councilor Solario. But Vince, I know you have to go, Councilor Ollie has to go, Fat Buie has to go, Sal has to go.
Geez.
So let's talk quick here, please, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think we're going to take a picture in a minute before we lose everybody. But also, before we lost everybody, I wanted to interject just one, I think, key topic of discussion going forward, and thank you for your kind words, but along that same line, I think this is huge. Like this could seriously be the biggest single project that any of us ever worked on in our city council tenure, if we keep it moving forward, if we do it right and if we complete it, right? A lot of ifs in there and a lot of rolling up our sleeves and doing work. I think everybody's going to want to be involved in this, everybody's going to want to touch it. So I don't know how we approach that aspect. To Councilmember Solario's point, it's not easy getting this whole crowd together in a room. We've all got very busy schedules and the thought of getting all 14 of us together and staffs, whatever, like we've done tonight on a regular basis, may not be a realistic ask. The flip side is, if we set up some kind of an ad hoc committee or a subcommittee, that means we're sort of narrowing down the people that are sort of in the privy of the day-to-day and what's going on on this. I want for this, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion, I don't have a preference either way. I want, my only, I guess, insistence is that I think everybody's going to want to be involved in this, nobody's going to want to be left out of it. So how do we get there from here? How do we accomplish that? So if we do narrow to some ad hoc committee, there should be some clear reporting out structure where everybody's input is constantly taken and/or somehow that the whole group is constantly included throughout this process. Because we all want to be a part of this project and of this success ultimately, and everybody's got valuable input on it. So I don't know how we resolve that part, but it's just.
Councilor Solario, real quick and then a photo.
You know, on that same note, I think, you know, we have our staff here and we've got a lot of good input and for them to recommend some next steps, for them to work with our mayors and council members on next steps. I agree that everyone needs to be involved and I think we all should get together from time to time, but maybe there's a couple of different ad hocks or committees, maybe, I mean, the outreach, for example, is a big thing, the planning is a big thing, selecting folks. So maybe there are multiple roles. And so, you know, I think our staff can kind of put their heads together and give us next steps. With 14, you know, it's just, also just takes a lot of time. Thank you.
Do we have a photographer? All right, so Fat, that's your idea. Do you want us against this wall or sitting down or in front of?
Something with that TV and the Wheel of Wake golf course in the background would be great.
All right, well, how about one sitting down real quick? Because we're going to cover it when we all stand in front of it.
Yeah, everybody's sliding, everybody's sliding a little tighter.
Yeah.
You've got to send it to all 14 of you. Individually. Your first decision.
Came out, we'll compare them between the two city managers, see who got the better photo. Thank you. So I know several of you have to go. Sal, you have to go, you want to say something before you leave?
Always, yes. See, I had a chance to.
Real quick, real quick.
Go ahead. I just want to thank everyone once again, and I look forward to hearing what staff can come up with as far as ensuring that everyone gets a little bit of input into the decisions that are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to say something?
Real quick, before they scoot out of the room, they're leaving, but I think Councilmember Sarmiento's comment about the each city hiring consultant who looks into another consultant might be something for city staffs to look at because it's a lot more transparent and it's from a lawyer's perspective. I like that.
The other side of that is, I mean, I think anybody could interject people and we, I don't know how we get there, I don't know how formal we need to make it or not, but mainly I do.
I think, recommendation back from the, recommendation back from staff, definitely, but keep that in mind.
Yeah, one of the things I want to add, just real quick, as our mayor mentioned, is that there are other models throughout the state where cities, I don't know that in exactly this context have worked together, but there are some examples. And one of the things that we may want to explore with our counterpart in Garden Grove is creations of things such as like a JPA just for a certain amount of time, because we can structure the bylaws that would give everybody the input that you need, but would also give you the ability to break off. And we wouldn't have all these Brown Act problems and all these other things that I am imagining in my head might come into play. We may be able to solve those problems upfront. And then you also have a mechanism in which you could use to fund your work and also to select the people that you like to work for you. So I think that would be one of our staff recommendations, we could work with our managers as one of our suggestions that gives you, retains all of your authority, but gives you the flexibility you need to make the group work.
Additional comments? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert Zerschmeid, I am Lisa's counterpart here with the city of Santa Ana. I think we've heard enough tonight to come back to you with some really solid recommendations on how to proceed, both from the standpoint of a consultant and the type of consultant. I think this sort of effort is akin to a base closure planning effort in terms of the size of the site. And I think we do have some other analogues that we can look at to come back with some good recommendations for you. And I would welcome the participation in the city attorney's office in how this thing gets structured. So I think we have enough to go on to come back. Lisa, are you great?
Councilor Sarmiento?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I think, Steve, when you were talking, you said this could be some, this could be the most important or an iconic moment for all of us, right? Where we're touching something bigger than we've touched in the past. For some of us on our city council, we may not outlive, right? We may be gone before a lot of decisions are made. So to the extent we can engage those council members, and you know, there's about four lame ducks that I see at this table on this side of the room, that will be gone. So to the extent we can share some of our thoughts, you know, as we go, before we go, because we've lived with this site for now 10, 11 years, so we've seen the challenges, we've seen the opportunities, and we certainly, I think, would all benefit from having that conversation.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I think to speak to what Mayor Jones said about just transparency, I think for all of us to have the ability to speak up and share our ideas is important. I think we owe it to the residents, both in Santa Ana and in Garden Grove, to do so. So however that looks with the outreach and going forward. And I think all of us have unique skills and things that we can bring to the table, whether it be, again, on the outreach side of things or the development side of things. So however we navigate that, but I think we should do it quickly, as you said, so we don't get bogged down in it. We need to continue to move forward and get something going.
Thank you. Yes, please.
One thing I wanted to mention that I heard from the public, and I wanted to make sure the public's aware, from my standpoint at least, is that anything that's done here is going to be a net gain for the surrounding community, especially, you know, the surrounding community, that those residents will be affected in a positive way and not a negative way. And they will be able to get through the fence and they'll be able to use that area, maybe there'll be a home they can purchase or they'll play at a park, you know, that's going to be a net gain. And I think we're all, I think everyone here would say the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
You know, I'm a big dreamer and I do a lot of research, and I would just like to share with staff to look at something, and I know it probably won't be to this magnitude, but the new Johnson Controls Hall of Fame Village in Canton, Ohio, this is going to be the, it's an 800 million mixed-use development of pro football Hall of Fame campus underway. It's the first-ever sports and entertainment smart city. 10 major components will be integrated through technology and through, as share values of game commitment integrity. They're using football, but, you know, and technology and entertainment. It's a massive campus with a hotel, with a Hall of Fame, with a museum, with open space where kids can play. It's, they're dreaming really big. It's opening in 2019. This is just something for staff to take a look at. It's a pretty amazing project, the first of its kind. And so I would just encourage you, because I really believe as we talk about something being iconic, yes, there's definitely a need of housing and open space, definitely always can use retail, but if you look at something like this, it's going to draw folks as we look at Central Orange County and looking at North Orange County. I don't know what we like to call ourselves, you know, Councilman Bowie says North Orange County, many of us call ourselves Central Orange County. And so how do we bind those together? It could be a very powerful force with something that is magnetic. And I really believe at the end of the day, that's iconic and that brings together what Orange County truly is about. And again, I mentioned it earlier, sports, culture, arts, entertainment. I don't know what else we would like to add to the mix, but I think we do have to have that honest discussion. You know, I think it was said earlier, at the end of the day, you know, this asset belongs to you. Certainly, you're not, you know, obviously we haven't had the conversations, can the city of Santa Ana buy it or what's going to happen? But obviously you all want to return on your investment, back to your constituents, and we, and we all need to be clear about that, and so does the community, that the city of Santa Ana does not own this asset. It is, it belongs to the city of Garden Grove. And so this is an opportunity for us to have that candid conversation and really, what is that going to look like? So that we understand that, you know, obviously having open space or a park or football or achieve it, that's not going to really generate the kind of revenue that we're able to share. And so we also have to understand that going into this, if that's not where we want to go, we need to actually speak up. Because at the end of the day, what I don't want to happen is that we go along through this process, we excite our community, then we come back and we can't, you know, come, you know, both councils can't come together based on, you know, how we're going to break down the finances and who's going to get what. So I just want us to make sure that we're able to have that candid conversation sooner than versus later.
Yes, Councilor Wen.
I think I have an assignment for Sean. You know how I love my comparison staff, so maybe what we can do too, just on that note, as we're trying to figure out what we do as far as third parties coming in and helping us see our vision, and I would like to see sort of a comparison about other cities, whether in California, out of state, maybe even on an international level as far as what is being done in spaces this large, just to give us an idea. Because right now, you know, we have, there's no limit, there's no box, not that I want there to be one, but at least we can see what's being used and utilized in spaces this big and also seeing what's missing. If everyone's doing theme parks, if everyone's doing golf courses, everyone's doing hotels, what can we do differently? So I like, for myself, like to see what's already out there and then try and figure out what we can do to be different and think outside the box and be innovative.
I just want to add that in many ways now is when it starts to become difficult. And I think we need to remain optimistic and Pollyannish, and we're going to hear a lot of times no, but it doesn't mean that it has to remain a no. If we really want something, let's work together to try to figure out how to turn it into a yes. Otherwise, we're just going to get burdened by, you know, questions and obstacles and difficulties, and all of a sudden, we're going to get stuck. So let's just not get stuck. You know, if that means we need, you know, four committees, because somebody wants to work on outreach, somebody wants to work on infrastructure, somebody else wants to work on financing, somebody else wants to work on structure, whatever it is, you know, let's communicate with each other and find ways that we can all give our input and participate in the interest of moving it, moving the project forward. Because, you know, because this, you know, the more things we add, and we have to add a lot of things, the heavier it gets, and eventually it can't go anymore. So we have to give and take, and that's part of the reason why I think that, you know, money early matters. And all I'm talking about is, you know, if we're going to share, you know, what does that structure potentially look like? And maybe we can begin with early concepts. Doesn't mean we do a contract, but some early concepts that say. Doesn't mean we do a contract, but some early concepts that say, you know, whatever it is that you have at the end of the day, and it produces X number of dollars, how are you going to split those dollars up, under what mechanisms? And I think our city attorneys can work together to develop that, and then that'll give us at least resolution on certain issues so we can focus on things that we have not yet resolved. You know, technically, I don't know what to do right now, because I think we should continue to talk a bit longer, but we just lost the quorum. I didn't even realize that. We don't have a quorum anymore, at least in Santa Ana. Maybe we can merge our councils, and together, we still have a quorum. Right.
That's exactly to the point I made earlier about thinking of alternative mechanisms by which we can not.
So if we had a joint venture, a joint, then we'd still have a quorum.
We could draft bylaws if you retain your quorum.
All right, well, let's not discriminate against Councilor Villia, guys. And does anybody else want a closing comment? Because if not, I think maybe we've taken this as far as we should.
If this were to become residents, and we would end up splitting the revenue, I just want to know where the vote's going to go, Garden Grove or Santa Ana?